The Athol Royalston Regional School District School Committee meeting for Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first line item of business is the pledge of allegiance. I won't make sense. Will you start us, Brittany?
I'm sure.
She's stinkin', I forgot. And she was coming.
That's okay. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving along, we have the approval of minutes from March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make that motion to approve as presented.
Motion made and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, I know there's some new members here. If you hadn't had an opportunity to read through them or you don't know what was said or you didn't get a chance to watch the meeting, it's okay to abstain at this point because you weren't here. So don't feel as though you have to. So we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? And then all those abstained? Okay, moving along to public input. I didn't see anything else on the list. We're good? Thanks, Dave. And moving along, we had recognition just before the meeting started. We'd like to recognize students at Athol High School, Cooper Smith, and Alexander Levine, Arms, Luna Luna, and Nicholas White, at ACES, Wyatt Powell, and Madison Gaggen, and RCS, Cole Dunn, and Benjamin Wolfski. Our student representatives are not here with us this evening, so we are at unfinished business, which there is none. The first line item of business on new business is the school committee reorganization, and I will turn it over to the superintendent.
I'm gonna treasure this. It's very rare that I get the gavel. So our first order of business in the reorganization, first, I think it might be appropriate to have our new members. Maybe we can all go around and introduce ourselves, including the new members, and maybe if you're a new member, you can just state that you're a new member. Or a returning, or a returning member.
An old-new reunion.
Lee, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I think everybody knows me. I appreciate the fact that I'm able to be back here with this group. I look forward to helping to move the district forward and look forward to working with everybody.
My name's Frank Visco, new member. Been coming to these meetings a while as a parent and hoping I can help the district and make it right choices for our students.
Brittany Newton, I am in my third year now. This is the start of my third year on the committee, and I'm also looking forward to working with our new members and continuing the work that we've been doing with those who are returning.
I'm Emily White. This is going into my second year.
Laura Robinson, this is my third year.
Tammy Duquette, this is my start of my sixth year. First as chair, and it's been an honor to work with everyone who's been here, and of course I know Lee, and I know Frank and Bobby from before. Kristi, welcome back. It's a pleasure to work with everybody.
I'm Darren Worth, the superintendent.
I'm Ross Dupre, General Counsel and Labor Counsel.
Cindy Kennedy, Assistant Superintendent.
Dan Diddy, part-time interim business administrator.
Kristi Waymire, technically I'm new, but did serve as a backfiller since last June.
I'm Bobby Newman. I'm new and old, and I want to thank also the taxpayers in Athol and in Royalston who voted for me. Thank you all.
And Eric Jack, my second year.
So our first order of business is that I will entertain a motion to nominate or I will entertain a nomination for the chairperson of the committee.
Laura?
I nominate Tammy Duquette for chairperson. I second that.
Second. Sorry.
That's her.
I don't wait.
Okay, so we have Tammy nominated. Are there any other nominations for chairperson of the committee? Any discussion? All in favor of Tammy Duquette serving as chairperson? All opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations. See, it was short-lived.
You can bang it anytime you want, Matt. I mean, it's right here. Okay, moving on. So we will now nominate a vice chair. Is there a nomination on the floor for a vice chair?
I'll nominate Brittany.
Second. Sorry.
Nominate Bobby Newman?
Okay, motion made for Bobby Newman and for Brittany New, sorry, Bobby Newman and for Brittany Newton. Is there, is there, there's a second for Brittany. Is there a second for Bobby? Motion made and seconded for Bobby. So we have two people on the floor. Is there any discussion about why you feel one person should be versus the other? So Eric, you nominated Brittany?
I just feel she did a great job as vice chair in the past and would like to see her continue if she's willing.
I personally worked with Brittany, so we are currently in some Chapter Seventy funding. So I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say that, but if I would put a vote in for Brittany because we are in the middle of some pretty heavy work with funding. So do I just also, are there, are there any other discussions? Anyone else?
Just, I, I just wanted to, you know, state that either of the ladies from Royalston are more than capable. I just, I mean, obviously myself, Frank, and Bobby walking in the door for the first, you know, obviously I kind of just left and come back. But, you know, I have nothing but the utmost respect for Roberta, but I do concur that Brittany and Tammy can continue the work for another term.
All right, so do we do one at a time or just two?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor for Brittany? That carries the majority vote.
Um.
Did you see me?
All, any, all in favor of Roberta? I think we have to take it.
Yeah, we're, we're in the majority already with this.
Yeah.
All right, so then that means Brittany, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for at least being willing to step up and somebody putting her name up.
Yes, come right in.
Next item on the new business agenda is the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five school committee meeting calendar, which I believe everyone did receive via email as well. So no physical visiting, I think, for sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta go back. Part of this, we have to vote who is going to be the secretary. In years past, it's always been the superintendent. So if there's a motion on the floor to nominate the superintendent as our secretary?
I nominate the superintendent to be our secretary.
First, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I'm honored.
We are too. All those in favor? Thank you for the reminder, because I forgot. Thank you. So in your packet in front of you, you will have the school committee dates for next year. These are our meetings. Two to note, February twelfth is one week early, as is April ninth, so we can avoid having to be here on vacation weeks. Does anyone have any, well, I can make a motion, can somebody make a motion to accept it as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Just a, just a discussion?
Yep, and second, is there a second? Okay, great. And now for discussion.
One of those meetings needs to say RCS.
One of these meetings. Okay, so.
We normally go once a year to RCS.
We, we have gone in the past, but in, because we are set up here for the school committee meetings, we aren't visiting any other buildings, is my understanding, and that was made last year, year before?
I believe, I believe it was made this past, this past year.
Yeah.
But we may, we may have to, lead to your point, we may have to make some adjusting to bylaws, just to control.
So the way that the bylaw is written, it's technically covered, because we actually looked at this in policy when we were kind of in flux with whether we needed to hold one last year at RCS, and the way that it's written, it technically can be changed as long as within forty-eight hours of what the location is. So we didn't move to change the bylaws. With that said, with the reorganization and we're looking at subcommittees, I think, you know, the policy, whoever is on that subcommittee should probably take another look at them with the changes.
I'm assuming this equipment obviously is fixed, but is there a way to do, if we had to do one this year? And I think it's appropriate to make sure the Royalston community is included. Could we go to a Zoom meeting if we wanted to? Okay. Lee, would you think that would be fine?
Yeah, it's fine.
Is there any other discussion on these dates? I didn't check for major holidays, but is there anyone who celebrates a major holiday on any of these days that would coincide? We, Mitch used to have one that would coincide, but.
It's usually in September.
It's usually September. Just double check it. I was remiss to say that Kylie is not here with us this evening, but she did have a baby, healthy baby girl, and I just, Kylie, if you're watching, probably not, but congratulations. We are so happy for you and elated. She's absolutely beautiful. Thanks for sending us the picture.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah. All right, September. You said September, was it?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any holidays in eighteen.
I'm just making sure, just in case there was somebody that we would, when Mitch was on the committee, we were very sensitive to making sure that we followed everything to make sure that he was able to participate in his holidays. Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded to accept as presented with the conversation about having a meeting at RCS. Is there any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor? Moving along, we are going over to the CAPS Collaborative Agreement.
Sure. So the CAPS Collaborative is made up of a number of districts that work together to offer certain services to their membership. You can see on page three, there is a list of the members for the collaborative, and there was, I apologize, I'm blanking on who was just recently added now. One of the members just became part of the collaborative, so it's come back to the committee to accept the agreement now with all of the participating members with the newly added membership. I can look that up, I think, but we, or we could just move to vote on it as, as it stands.
So the only, the only change would be that we're adding someone into the collaborative? But we're, we're already part of it. There's nothing that's changing.
Correct. We've been a part of this collaborative. We, we use their services for professional development, for special education, outsourcing, and other, and other factors, so.
So the motion would be to accept the collaborative agreement as presented with the new member? Is that, what?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
And this would be, this is for the new school year as well. So they put this together. Actually, we didn't have to approve it every year regardless, but there was a new member added.
I'd make a motion to accept it.
Okay, there's a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion about the CAPS Collaborative agreement? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next item that we have.
There's no consent needed for that. There's no documentation in the packet for that.
Okay, all right. The next item we have is the out-of-state field trip proposal to Franklin Pierce by Heather Berlin at the high school. Is there anyone here to speak on it, or?
Based on, we have a state field trip, we're just looking for approval from the school committee for our junior class to go to Franklin Pierce University on Friday, March thirty-first for a college fair. Eighty-two colleges and universities from around the region will be there. It seems to fit the best into our schedule. It's short distance away from Athol High School, so looking for permission to travel out of state.
Just that date one more time. I thought you said March thirty-first?
Friday, May thirty-first.
May thirty.
Okay.
Friday, sorry. Friday, May thirty-first.
Perfect. So is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Franklin Pierce for the high school?
I make the motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The next thing we have is the Nature's Classroom Contract. Is there a? Is it in the packet?
Yeah.
It's in the packet. I don't know if Carrie and/or Jason were going to speak to it.
Oh, here it is, it's in the packet.
Jason?
Sure.
The Nature's Classroom Trip has been quite a tradition, and my fifth and sixth grade, we just got back from Nature's Classroom Trip. But next year, Jason and I collaborated, so all of our students are going to be going together next year. But our students do all the fundraising, we have been fundraising.
And Arms is going June fourth through December.
So the contract is for us to approve in order for us to have all of the classes go together at whole schools? Or just in, in general to approve to go to the, to approve for Nature's Classroom?
To approve, to be able to attend.
To attend, okay.
They're holding those dates for us. I still have to wait for them to come through.
Gotcha. All right, so the first page at the bottom shows the dates, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh through Friday, May thirtieth. Is there a motion to approve Nature's Classroom Contract as presented? I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-five, I should say twenty-twenty-five. This is for next year. Let me just get a motion. Once the motion is made and seconded, then we can talk. So is there a motion made?
I'll move it.
Motion made and seconded? Thanks, Frank. Okay, now we have discussion. Go ahead.
It's the Royalston students at the school. It was always that it was already paid for for them because the money was in there. Is that still going on?
No.
The kids, the kids have been fundraising the last couple of years.
They have been, okay, because I know there was money that was left by people that had passed on in Royalston. That they had left money for the children to go to Nature's Classroom.
Yeah, we will. We'll check it out.
This contract only says for twenty students. Does that matter for this vote?
That's what, that's why I'm kind of.
I think it's just Royalston, because you set a different date, right?
Yeah, this, this year.
This is for next year. We are going together on the, the same. So we'll probably end up having to approve another contract for the Arms. This is just for RCS, so my understanding.
How many students went this, just this last week?
Our fifth and sixth grade, so we have twenty-something students.
Yeah, and we have grades five and six going this year, and I believe it was somewhere around seventy-ish as far as the total number going in June. That's why we were able to, we originally wanted to do two different weeks. We were able to combine it to one just because of numbers. So that's why, that's kind of what sparked the conversation as far as what might work best.
But I believe this year's trip was approved already previously.
Yeah.
So Jason will, will have to just bring the numbers and the contract for the middle school for the FY twenty-five at a later point.
Yeah, I believe this was just for.
They're holding, they're holding the date for us. Just sixth grade for next year, so no fifth grade? So your sixth graders will join the fifth and sixth period, or is it just?
We did that for COVID. Yeah, it was, we, the two grades had been going to make up for the gap for the COVID year.
Okay. And we're all made up now. Every kid's had the opportunity?
So now COVID's officially not.
We're totally COVID out.
Just want to be clear.
And I, I do want to make a note that, you know, my group that just went, you know, with the NorEaster that came in and it lost electricity, they were wonderful to work with. The group that was there had an outstanding time, and they were very adaptive and did indoor activities, and our chaperones and myself were very pleased with how accommodating they were for the kids. The kids had a wonderful time.
And so if this number that, right now it says twenty, are these dates still going to be fine if, like, all of a sudden we say we have a hundred kids coming?
We've, we're already both on the books, the amount of children that he's planning to bring for next year and our, that's to solidify our date, so they'll hold the date if our, my contract is approved.
So there is a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? You're awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Carrie Purcell, presentation on Focused Schools.
So just a brief overview. Many of you know, the district has been working with Focused Schools for the past couple of years. We've referenced the professional development that they're doing with our coaches, our principals, and also our building instructional leadership teams. So today we have with us Carrie Purcell from Focused Schools, and she's just going to share a bit about what's been happening in the district and how we're moving forward. So thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Matt, for having me, and thank you to the school committee for allowing us to come and give you a little bit of an update about the work that we've been doing in all of our schools in Athol, our Royalston Regional School District. I also have with me my colleague, Miriam. She can wave from the back there. She's been doing a lot of amazing work, also supporting your amazing leaders in your schools. So Matt told me I have about an hour and forty-five minutes tonight. Is that right? I said I'll only take an hour and thirty, but no. We just really wanted to have the opportunity to provide you with a brief overview of what we've been up to, if I can get this to work. Hello. It is on. Oh, there we go. It was Matt standing up to make it work. So we're going to divide this conversation in a few parts. Number one, just to tell you a little bit about who we are as an organization. Number two, to teach you a little bit about what we've been up to. Number three, to tell you about how things are going. And number four, to think about where are we going next. At any time, if you have questions, because I tend to talk fast and I tend to talk, oh, I say a lot of words that sometimes don't make sense, just say, hey, can you stop? And I'll be glad to answer questions, but also we've left a little room at the end of the conversation for questions as well. Make sense? All right, so let's start with a little bit about who we are. As Matt said, my name is Carrie Purcell, and I've been with Focused Schools for about fourteen years now. I started teaching when I was nine years old, for all of you who can do math, because I've been in education for over three decades. And our mission as a company and my mission as a person that gets to be a part of this company is to serve students with excellence. Everything that we do as an organization, whether we're in ARRSD or any other district where we serve, is to make sure that every student gets what they need in every classroom, every day, no exceptions. So as you can see from this slide, we have been, over the course of a couple of decades, in twenty-four states and in Canada, serving districts in various capacities. We have one thing in mind, and that's to identify the main thing, that one thing that we need all children to know and be able to do, not only to be successful in school, but to also be successful in life. This organization has been in business for over two decades and was founded by two educators who were actually co-principals in Long Beach Middle School out in California. And they realized in their work together that the thing that is missing in education is this opportunity to build capacity in the teacher leaders and in the principal leaders who are doing this fearless work each and every day. And so that's how the company was founded, and we continue to do that work today. So on those sort of yellow circles, you'll see, this is what we do no matter where we're at, and we're going to unpack specifically what it looks like in your district. So our job day one is to work ourselves out of a job, and we do that by building capacity. And the two groups that we think about first when we're building capacities, number one, your principals, those fearless leaders who come to work every day to do what's right for the students they serve by making instructional decisions based on data. The second group that we really think about is our BILTs. How are we empowering our instructional leadership teams to lead from the front, to be confident as learning leaders, and to ask themselves always what's working, what's not working, and what shall we do about both? Our job in Athol really has been, right now, to build the system structures and strategies so that they can have the space to do this really important work, because at the end of the day, whether you're a school committee member, a member of the community, an employee of Athol Royalston, our work really is about serving all students all the time and always. So that's a little bit about who we are. Let's see if I can make this slide move to the next spot. Whoops, it now is moving too fast. All right, so when we work in any district, what we pride ourselves in is customizing our support based on where our district is at right at that moment. So on the slide, you're going to see things that probably look familiar to you. At the top, the Y is your mission statement. This is why we do the work that we do, because we're trying to help all students become responsible citizens in a global community. The district worked really hard this year under the leadership of your assistant superintendent Cynthia Kennedy to really come up with a district priority, because often in districts, we try to do six million, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand things, and we don't do anything well. And so Cindy led a group of folks to really think about, well, what does the data say that all of our students need to know and be able to do, and that's what they call their district priority, and I'm sure you've heard about that in different conversations. And so we're always thinking about how are we building capacity around that what? And that what is making sure that all students are able to read and write capably at or above grade level as it relates to the literacy standards. So that's what we base all of our work on. So what we do here in Athol does not look the same as what we do in other places because we're customizing to meet your needs. So what does that look like? Now it's not moving at all. All right, so last year, when we started, the first group of folks that we started our work with were your instructional coaches, who by the way are absolutely incredible, amazing human beings and leaders of learning. I think the most senior person, correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, had less than six months' experience, something like that. But it felt like they had been doing this all of their lives. They have a passion for this work. They have the will to do this work, and they have the skill to do this work. So Cindy and I worked together to increase the amount of tools they have in their toolbox to really think about coaching as, as, as we think in tiers. So that visual on the left really unpacks how we think about coaching across the country and specifically in Athol Royalston. So we think about coaching not as what I do for one individual, but how are, how am I as a coach spending most of my time providing professional development and support to equip and empower every classroom teacher in the building, to make quarter turns to their instructional practice to better meet the needs of the students? So they would say that they, and, and, and I would support this, and Miriam would support this. We spend more than fifty percent of our time thinking about what does support look like for all. The next piece of their job is in the middle of that visual, it's that yellow piece. And that's the support that we're providing to individual department teams, grade-level teams, around really being able, being thoughtful, excuse me, and examining data again to ask ourselves what's working, what's not working, and what are we going to do about both? And then that last column, that red column, is that individual coaching support that a brand-new teacher might need, that a teacher who comes and says, I'm really struggling with this, and so could you provide me support around that? And we call those coaching cycles, and people stay in coaching cycles about three to five weeks or four to six weeks if we're really stretching it, and we're focused on building their capacity around one thing. So this year, so we spent a little bit of time really learning about those tiers last year. This year, we're getting really good as coaches around going through the coaching cycle, that sort of flower-looking visual that you see on the right, and that is helping a teacher identify the one thing they want to get better at, and then running them through that cycle so that they're owning that date, or that, that goal. They're identifying their next step, and coaches coming alongside of them to build capacity in their ability to best serve all students. So how is that going? What should you be proud of? All right, so some accomplishments to date. There is a structured coaching amazing model happening across all schools. Every coach is conducting focus coaching cycles. They're meeting weekly, at least, with principals to make sure that we're driving in the same direction, trying to achieve a common goal. They're getting very skillful at making data-driven decisions, and they're instrumental members of the BILT. So all of those things are superstar actions. We don't see this everywhere we go, and this district should be really proud of your coaching model. Where do we go next? We're going to continue now to build their individual capacity because like all of us, we all have our own strengths and we all have our own opportunities. So now that we've laid sort of this foundation, we're going to be working with the coaches on an individual. on an individual basis to continue to build that capacity. So that's one piece of the work that we do. That's a lot of information. Well, I flip the slide to the next spot to talk about what we're doing with principals and coaches together. Does anyone have any questions? All right, so the second amazing group that you had in place prior to us coming, that we find great pleasure in supporting, is your BILT. And that is your Building-Based Instructional Leadership Team. And our job has been to collaborate with now the coaches and the building principals, and we've also had an opportunity to work with the assistant principals, to think about this visual that we see on the slide, up on the screen. And that is, how does every agenda, every time the BILT meets, focus on data? It doesn't have to be just MCAS data, it might be attendance data, it might be learning walk data, it might be student work data, but we're working really hard to build their capacity, because data is just a number unless we choose to do something with it. And as educators, and I've been an educator, as I said, for a long time, we've often shied away from data, because we've gone into looking at data with a deficit mindset. So our work with the principal and the coaches is how do we have a growth mindset, to mine in the data, to look at what's working, and to build on that. So this year, we've been very strategic in how we're building out this support. And I'm really not done, but it tells me that I am, and it's not letting me go back. Oh, there we go. All right, so, like I said, in one of those yellow circles, this year has been around building the systems and structures to make sure that they can become a data-driven BILT moving forward, right? This is a process that takes time, you just can't snap your fingers and say, well, we're all set. So some things that the principal, the coach, and the BILT should be proud of is every single school has a set schedule where they're meeting about two times a month, and they're building agendas or attempting to show some growth in creating agendas that are focused on data and teaching and learning. So gone are the days that they did what I did, and we just talk about management stuff, like when's the field trip, and what does the bus schedule look like? There's a place for that, but not in the BILT, because we're focused on instruction. We've introduced to the principals and the coaches, and they're giving it a whirl, a try, the data inquiry cycle. We've done it twice. We did it once with number data, so your map data that's administered three times a year. And then the second time we did the data cycle, we looked at student work, because student work is a piece of data, because it tells us, we taught it, did they learn it? If yes, what next? If no, what next? So we've done it two times, and now they're exploring using that in their BILT. Every BILT has norms and roles, because we know that the principal can't do that job alone. It takes everybody on that team to participate, either as a process observer, a timekeeper, a note taker, or a student advocate, so we're practicing that. And one hundred percent of the amazing principals that you have and the coaches are taking what they learn in PD, because we meet about once a month, and they're applying those strategies and those systems and structures to the work. So they don't just come to these sessions and then say, okay, I'm going back and doing what I've always done. They're really applying it, because they care so much about the students that they get to serve. So we've just sort of, you know, like when you're building a house, you first have to pour the foundation, if you live somewhere that can have a basement. So we poured the basement, and so now, next year, we're going to start building the house, right? So that's what the now-what piece. We're going to increase the investment of the members of the BILT. We're going to move towards, this is an idea, to full implementation. And the last one, that's the most important eye, is we're going to continually measure our impact, because our promise is, we're working ourselves out of a job, and the way we know that it's working is that our students are growing. And we have a sort of this minimum threshold, that eighty percent of our students should be growing in first-best instruction, instruction they get every day, and so we're really working hard to get to that spot. And the big goal, of course, always is, one hundred percent of our students are growing. But we set that threshold, we meet that, and we keep moving forward. So, that is like a year's worth of work, and I don't know how many minutes that was. Did anyone even time me? I want to pause for the last time and say, does anyone have any questions, any comments, any wonders, anything that's going to keep you awake at night that you'd like to have answered before I turn this off? And thank you for your time.
I don't have any questions, but I was part of Cindy saying all these ideas about BILTs and all these things when it started, having the discussions during negotiations, so to see the work moving in this manner is actually, it's enthralling to me, because I'm like, wow, they're actually doing something. So, thank you for everyone who's ever put any work into this, and the teachers and the staff that are going through it, because it's, like you said, it's worth it. The kids are what the goal is. So it's really interesting to sit back and look at everything we talked about during negotiations come to fruition.
That's wonderful. And you know, something that I forgot to mention, and thanks for commenting, Tammy, is that Matt and Cindy, so often we go to districts and we come and do our work, and then we get in the car and we leave, and then the work sort of leaves with us, because there isn't a commitment from district leadership to follow up and follow through and to provide support in between. And so Matt and Cindy have been really good about attending BILT meetings and providing feedback and being that support system. And so that's been just something amazing that we should call out in this space. Yes, Roberta?
Yes, I'll be really looking forward to seeing how this is going to grow. I'm really looking forward to seeing this.
Ah, that's so exciting. Well, I'm glad that you're excited about it, because really, the experts are in your school buildings, the teachers are the heroes, the teachers are the leaders, and I always used to tell my teachers, everyone has a voice in this, your voice matters and counts, because you're the first line of defense, right? You're the person who spends the most time with our kiddos, and without your voice, I'm likely to make a decision like from back here, as opposed to right here. So thank you so much, Roberta.
You're very welcome.
I would just echo a little bit of what Tammy said. Thank you for working with all of our teachers, and again, just thanking our teachers and coaches who are engaged with this and really putting forth the effort so this can grow and that house can get built.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have some amazing people who are driving to the parking lot every day to do ride-by kids, and that's all we can ask, right?
I was going to chime in earlier, and I'm glad that Tammy and Brittany did, because I wanted to thank the committee, because this work, as you guys mentioned, would not have been possible without this most, and the union, right? I want to thank the teachers and the union as well. This work would not have been possible without the last round of negotiations and us really putting together the systems that will allow the distributed leadership amongst our teachers, who, as Carrie mentioned, they're the heroes of this district, right? And these building instructional leadership teams, they're at the core of what all of the schools need to do, all of the decision-making that happens, whether it's analyzing student data, developing professional development plans, working with, just figuring out how to move the schools forward. It's the work of the building instructional leadership teams. And this last round, for those who are new to the table, during this last round of negotiations, we really expanded the participation in the leadership teams. There used to be the same two or three people that went to all of the meetings from each school, and we really broadened the constituency to represent the whole school. So now there's teachers from different grades, there's teachers from different contents, there's special educators, there's paraeducators, there's all representation at the table, helping to look at the information, understand what's happening with respect to our student learning, and then make the right decisions. I can say that, I know Cindy and I, we try to split up who's going to which BILT on which days, when they're happening. We've been attending almost all of them, between the two of us, and there's just such tremendous work that happens there. And I, like the teachers processing the information and sharing ideas, it's wonderful to see. And similarly, as Carrie mentioned, I've snuck in, believe it or not, I found it hard to not speak, but I tried my best. Dave can probably discredit me for that. But I've also been able to participate in some of the coaches' and principals' meetings, because that's another place where a lot of this work happens, where Carrie mentioned the instructional leaders, you know, by design of the principal and the coach. So I know I have, and I know Cindy has, we've sat in and observed and sometimes jumped into the meetings that happen between the principals and coaches, and it's great to see, because I get to see them working together to plan for the building ILT team meetings, the "T" is "team," sorry about that, but I get to see them plan for those BILTs. And then, a lot of what happens at the BILTs are things that they're going to propagate out to the entire staff, whether it's through communications, different systems that we're putting into place, or sometimes even the learning that now takes place at faculty meetings. So some of that is also what we get to experience, and the work has been moving forward, and everyone who is engaged in it, I believe, has benefited from Carrie and Focus Schools' expertise, and I'm thrilled that we've gotten to this point, and I'm just really eager to see how far we can move this work, because it is, it's awesome. Dr. Kennedy can certainly speak to it more than I, even though she doesn't like to speak as much as I do, but I didn't know if you had anything to say, anything to say.
I would just concur that our principals have worked really hard. I'm really proud of all of them, how they've taken on the mantle of instructional leadership, and they've really pushed themselves to grow, and so not only is their capacity increasing, but they're also modeling for their teachers and taking risks. And I also agree that our coaches are, they are amazing, they are amazing. And so I always try to give them a shout-out, because they work so hard. We all do, and our teachers all do, but our coaches are forever saying, I don't feel like I'm doing enough.
Yes, yeah. And it was so interesting, and I said I was done talking, but I'm never done talking.
Take your time.
I think it was about two months ago, the assistant principal said, hey, we want to be a part of this conversation. That never happens in districts, right? But your administrators are so invested that we had, it actually was a snow day, and they still chose to meet, and we got on Zoom, and we talked about their role in supporting student learning. And it was incredible, because they want to invest in this, they see themselves as having a part in this. It's just another example of you have a really amazing staff who want to do right by these kids, and I hope that we continue sort of to acknowledge them and thank them for that, because I promise you, it's not true everywhere that we get to go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. Thank you for having me, and I'll save up that hour and a half for you.
I thought Matt was going to take my talk.
No, I stopped myself relatively shortly. To be continued. Please, thank you.
Okay, moving along with the agenda, communications. District class size enrollment, I believe, is in the packet. Did you have any other additional comments usually associated with that?
Nope.
I did have one question on that. Last month, we thought that maybe there were some buckets that were, did that get flushed out, and this is now?
It's a revised one.
Okay.
So Jody did, Jody did some diligent work on the sheet and broke it up a little more clearly. As you can see, and Jody, by all means, if you'd like to jump in, feel free, but one of the things that was a little confusing, if you look in the first column of the revised sheet, you can see the number of students that are in some specialized programs. Those numbers were bulked into some of the grade count numbers previously, and so Jody went and made sure she worked with the school administration and really identified what the class-specific numbers are and then what those specific program numbers are. So it should be a lot clearer now. And I thank you, I thank you for that, Jody.
Are there any other questions about the enrollment? Financial statements and approval of accounts, so we all know that we're having our meeting on the 22nd at 6:00 here for a discussion of the fiscal '25 budget. Dan, we did not budget this up, didn't meet, so there's nothing to report on until we have that meeting, is that correct?
The chair, that's correct. I mean, we had a brief meeting to recommend to the full committee the budget, the assessments, et cetera, which I'm happy to speak to. It's not on the agenda, but when we get to the public hearing and the vote, it is our intention to present that to the full committee.
Okay, moving on to the reports of the committee, so, oh, sorry, Bobby, I didn't see you there.
It's okay. I was just curious, I would like to have a copy of the budget.
I can, I did not.
Don't leave, Jody will give you one before you leave tonight, and Frank, if you wanted a physical copy as well, it is located on our website? It's on the website too, but we can get you a physical copy, so you can rifle through it.
And to, just to add to that, there have been some, there are ongoing revisions to the budget, as we are still developing it and numbers are still coming to fruition. Before the end of next week, I know we will be on break, but very shortly, I will probably be sending out to the entire community some revised budget as well. It's very possible that there may be two optional budgets with one alignment. I know, again, speak openly, there's been a lot of conversation in the community, and I know that the school committee has heard a lot of feedback around one of the positions, specifically, that was one of those top-three positions that we decided may need to be eliminated, which was the dean of students at RCS. And in conversations with some of the school committee members, and after listening to some of the concerns and talking to our district leadership, we've come up with another proposal as well on the potential for putting a dean position back into the budget. And so what I might be doing is sending out some detailed information on what's included in each of the budgets, and then just explain briefly the difference between the two budgets, and then share both with the community, because I have a feeling that when we do go to the public hearing and the committee finally votes on a budget, it will probably be one of the two options. To be clear, the amounts of money in the buckets, in the general, 1,000 series and 2,000 series and 3,000 series, those will all remain relatively the same, because the truth is, according to the state, when we're looking at that 2,000 series, that's all of our instructional costs, right? That includes curriculum materials, resources, staff, and any kind of educators or materials that we're using. So anything that we're looking to shift around will more than likely just be in that 2,000 series. So there'll be some changes to the specific detail of the budget, but it wouldn't be impacting the assessments to the towns or the overall groupings of how much we'd be charging to the 1,000 series, 2,000 series, and so on and so forth. Is that clear to the committee members? Okay, great. And I will try to make that clear when I send that information out, what the differences are. I think a little bit later, we'll also have some other conversation about the budget, but I'll stop talking for now, so Tammy doesn't have to bring out the cane.
Moving on to reports of the committee, as the chair, just wanted to, again, reiterate, we have our budget meeting on 4/22 at 6:00 p.m. here at ARMS, and the River Rat Parade is this weekend, so get out, support those rowers, canoes, I don't know what the right word is, but somebody will tell me, and have fun and enjoy the community event this weekend, and be safe, and that's what I have. Moving along to budget and finance, which we kind of just went through. The budget subcommittee, obviously, we did not, we met, but it was prior with Elaine when she was here. That's what Dan was referring to, we did have a small meeting, but we will talk about that more at the certification of the budget on the 22nd. And then we will be looking at the committee membership for what is open in terms of seats and where we put our newest members. So keep your eyes out for an email from me, I'll go through who's left and where we need to fill space. Thank you, Bobby, we already had a conversation about what was interesting to you, so, once So once we get to assigning people to the committees, we'll send that out in email. Can we just make sure that Dom, make sure that everyone has a school committee email, maybe reactivate these?
I believe we've already done that.
Okay. That's it for budget and finance for now, and then facilities.
We did meet today, we just went over some more jobs that have been started as far as the grants to help with H VAC and that Aces finally has, we have the plate brown surface, I believe, started going down until, you know, Mother Nature decided to be a brat. But then it will be finished after vacation, or by the end of vacation.
Thank you. Next is academic excellence, our ex-member who is no longer with us, used to chair that. And I don't believe they've met last month, okay? So we will put together another academic excellence and what that looks like typically. Cindy will come to us and tell us how things look academically and she makes presentations a couple of times a year. So whether we continue with that particular committee is up in the air at the moment. Matt and I will have some conversations about where we go with that particular committee.
I will say, not to cut you off.
No, please.
I spent the day actually at the new superintendent induction program. And one of the things that came up today during our table conversations were the subcommittees and how they function and what subcommittees exist in different districts. And it's rather interesting, there are some districts that have one subcommittee. Some just have budget and policy and facilities, others have dozens. And some meet regularly, but more frequently, there are a lot of committees that just meet as needed, which is some of the conversations that we had had particularly around the public relations piece and the academic excellence. So to Tammy's point, I think we can have further conversation and just decide whether or not we want to leave these on the agenda or just have ad hoc meetings if needed for those particular areas of interest or just presentations from myself and/or Cindy at particular times during the year. Another thing that was mentioned that I will entertain, where we can speak at maybe regarding the policy subcommittee, it was brought to my attention that I know, I knew that MASK has a program where they house your policy electronically. But I also was told today that they have a process that you can engage them in to review all of your policies from start to finish. And it's actually a three-year policy, it's actually a three-year protocol that they go through where you break out the policy manual and you go through it from start to finish. But some of the conversation that we had today was, it can be very beneficial because what happens is as the school committees turn over, policy manuals sit on the shelves and some people know they're there, some people don't, some people know what policies exist and which don't. This process basically sets up a system, right? It gives you that first upfront kickstart to go through every policy the district has, compare them to the MASK templates and see whether we agree or disagree. And then it assigns different people to, you know, keep an eye on certain sections of the policy or to be the keeper of policy. And then it really sets up a sustainable plan to make sure that it's not just falling into the laps of whoever happened to be on the policy subcommittee.
Having been on that committee for very brief time, I can tell you right now, we would very much benefit from that because as we're, you know, I pretty much just look through and find, like, see like, okay, this policy looks like it's very outdated. It was last updated 20 years ago, we should probably look at it. And that's, that's literally the way that I've been trying to like pull policies. And so if we could have a system, I think there's a lot of policies in our district that have not been looked at for a very long time.
And I want to be clear, I gave you a ton of credit this afternoon while I was having those conversations where I said, our policy subcommittee happens to be very functioning. I said, I give credit to the person that chairs that committee who individually goes through and looks at the MASK recommendations and compares them to our existing policies and then brings specific policies to the subcommittee and then we review them together and decide whether we're on target or not. And that is, that's the bulk of the work that we're supposed to be doing. But to your point, in this conversation, it became clear that this might be something that would be helpful for us as a district. So that's why I brought it up.
Is it something we investigate with MASK and that have a cost associated with it?
Yeah, there's definitely a cost associated with it. But I, I think it's something that I will start looking into with MASK and Brittany and I can send a couple of emails together and see what it looks like, get in a better understanding of what their process is and then what the associated costs are.
And that does bring us two policies.
I was just gonna say, I took care of public relations and now the policy. Brittany, take it away.
We have two policies that are up for the third read, which would require a vote tonight. The first one is the I J O A field trip policy that's been in the packet for the last few months. Again, just as a reminder, that the only change we've really made to that was just some cross references to other policies to make sure that we were covering all our bases. Our policy was actually a little bit more thorough than the M A S C policy. So we kept, you know, the one that we were already moving forward with. So I would like a motion to accept the field trip policy as presented.
Motion. Motion made and is there a second? Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions?
And then the second one is the J I C, which is student discipline. Again, it's on its third read. For that particular policy, we have completely replaced our prior policy with the M A S C recommended policy with a lot of the updates that have come through from the state for restorative discipline and things like that. So this is just making sure that our policy is on the up and up with what the state's requirements are as well. And so we're looking for a motion to approve that as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's a motion.
Motion made and seconded, Eric and Lee, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? And the last one is the capital planning subcommittee.
Nothing for you. I can provide a brief update, TJ shared at the facilities subcommittee this evening. Every piece of wood that I find, I'm knocking on. We are prepared and ready to submit the statement of interest. I was confirming with M S B A, just a couple of procedural pieces with respect to how the votes need to be upordered and what needs to be included, whether the minutes need to go with them or not. Greg Smalley and I did have some conversations. Greg reached out to M S B A and had a conversation with one of their representatives and they kind of looked over our submission for our statement of interest. And our preliminary look over was, this looks good, there's just some other pieces that are missing, which are the vote and then just the signatures that are required at the end of the process. And we are pretty much ready to submit. I'm hopeful that we will submit by the end of the day tomorrow, just so I can say we got it in before the deadline of Friday.
The next section is committee member referrals. Frank, this is what we do here, because I didn't know when I first joined what was happening. Basically, the school committee, each person gets an opportunity to recommend something that we can discuss at a future meeting. You make the recommendation at this time, we jot it down and then the superintendent and I would come up with an agenda and where that, that topic that you speak of, it would fit. And that's basically, that's what this particular section is for. So typically, we'll start at the end and reported, this may be just a refresher for you. Lee's a vet and, you know, Kristi knows everything now, so. We'll start with Eric, do you have any referrals this evening?
Nothing.
Bobby, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, I'm just curious, has anything been brought up about, on doing anything with the Pleasant Street School? As I come down here, I see it, I'm like, wow, that could be used for so many things.
Yeah, so the Pleasant Street School is currently being leased by Launch Space. They're a program that they're trying to create an incubator space there, it's an entrepreneurial incubator space. They're starting with a commercial kitchen that they're, they're building. And their hope is to bring in local community members who are trying to start some type of food processing and packaging business. And they will be able to use the kitchen there to help start up their smaller businesses. Another aspect of it that they're looking into is the, they're trying to put together childcare in the building for those people that are using the incubator space. But at the same time, the district has been in very close communication with Launch Space. Unfortunately, they've hit a couple of delays, so they're very much grant funded. So when some of these grants either come through sporadically or they may need to look for additional funding, so it has held things up a bit. But they're developing that kitchen and we have plans to engage with the Launch Space program on a community feeding endeavor. So the plan is that they'll start, we'll prepare packaged meals for our community in their kitchen. I believe we were going to start by sending the, sending, I'm sorry, we would have a pickup either at their location or at the middle school. Then our next step was going to be looking to transport the packaged meals to our own food pantry where we could supplement what it is that we have there already. And so that we can continue to help support the community through that avenue. And then our last step of the plan is to come up with a way to have packaging and transportation, not transportation, but like bags to transport food in so that we could actually start sending students home directly with meals. That was part of the overall plan. Again, there's a few phases to the plan, but we need them to get their kitchen up and running first. But it's hopeful that we're going to have a number of endeavors that are collaborative with Launch Space and that should be the use of the building.
That'll be great, that'll be great for the community.
I think so.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing for me. Nothing.
I just want to briefly let everybody know that Matt and I did meet with Senator Commerford and Representative Whip yesterday to talk about our budget. Not a ton of extra details to share because that conversation just happened yesterday, but we are really pushing to explore some avenues of how we can either recuperate some funds that we lost or other ways we could get additional funding or access to additional funding. I just want to say that it was a good conversation, it was very productive. Senator Commerford and Representative Whip were very insightful, they were good listeners. They really understood where we were coming from as, I think, the most financially impacted by the SOA funding this year. So I just wanted you all to have that update. I know we mentioned at the last meeting that we were going to try to pursue some other avenues. We are actively pursuing them and the conversations have been good. And I'm hopeful maybe even by our meeting on the 22nd, we might have a larger update with some more concrete information to share.
I'll just provide a little more specificity. The two components that we're trying to target right now, we missed the Student Opportunity Act Group 11. What started as eight students in our low income count, they did the recount and now I believe we're down to six. The Department of Ed has sent me their low income list of students that they use to gauge where we stand. In those brackets, you can tell we're in, we were in 10 in 23 and moved to 11 for 24. Bucket 10 is, I think, between 60 and 70% low income for the entire district. And bucket 11 is above 70%. And we were at, for FY '24, 71 and a half to 72%. And then we, because, partly because of our increase in enrollment, but not all of that increase were low income students. And there were some changes to the way that Medicaid was processing people. We lost some students and as I said, we're short by six students. We're at 70% again right now. If we could get over that 70%, it would move us back into the 11th bucket. What Senator Commerford and Rep. Whip discussed with us with respect to that is, I do have my principals and our building leaders looking at that low income list and seeing what kids are in this district that may not have been identified for services through the state and through our guidance departments and through our community center. We are going to be reaching out to families. I am also probably going to send out a survey just to blanket the entire community because part of the conversation was, there might be families out, out in our community that are not familiar with what services are available through the state and they may not be registered and this may just be another way to get everyone's attention focused on ways to help their families and make sure that the community is thriving. So that's one important piece.
I just want to say thank you to the principals and all of the administrators who are looking at it. It's a very laborious task to go through this. And when you do identify, you know, a student that might qualify that's not on the list, it's an even more intensive process to help get them, you know, signed up or, you know, just educated on it. And there's a lot of requirements that those families then kind of have to jump through some hoops as well. And so I just want to thank all of them who are doing this work.
I appreciate that and I thank them as well. So there's one avenue that we're pursuing is trying to get our low income count up and see if DESI will recount. The, our legislators have told us that they will advocate strongly for DESI even though it's kind of at the timeline. They're going to advocate that they look at whatever information we are able to provide DESI. The other avenue that we're pursuing is, I think I've mentioned to the committee before, some of you are familiar with Chapter 50 of the Acts of 2006. Chapter 50 of the Acts of 2006 is a legislation that was passed specifically for the Athol Royalston Regional School District. Some time ago, when we apparently went bankrupt and the state came in and overviewed our finances and had to pretty much bail the district out, there was, there was an act put in place that required us to keep a reserve of a certain amount of money. That reserve currently is upwards of $560,000. So it's a little over half a million dollars that we're required to keep in that reserve right now. And if we do spend that money, the towns would have to reappropriate money to fill the reserve again. That's the way the legislation stands right now. Through conversations with Senator Commerford and Rep. Whip, they are looking to see whether or not we can do something about that legislation and if we were able to take that legislation off of the books or repeal that Act, Chapter 50, that would allow us access in FY '25 to that half a million dollars that would supplement our other sources of revenue that we've outlined in the budget. So that's a fingers crossed, very hopeful.
That's probably the quickest potential, even though it's not, nothing's quick, but.
I say very hopeful, I should be clear, I say, I'm very, I'm hoping. I'm not suggesting that it's, oh yeah, it's definitely going to happen. I'm very hopeful that it, that it could. But please know that our legislators are advocating for us and they're going to see what they can do to help bridge this gap.
And also to, just to be clear, the Chapter 50 is in addition to the E and D that we also have. So this is, you know, I think in lack of better terms, this was implemented so that we would have a rainy day fund. And we have raining, so.
And it's raining, exactly. I think we referenced that to the legislators yesterday. Our rainy day funds need to be hit because it's raining, so. Thank you for that, Brittany.
Yep. Did you have anything else you wanted to talk about, Brittany?
Just thank you to the committee for your nomination as vice chair again. Appreciate it.
Frank?
Um, I liked it. Think about talking about the enrollment here. We have ACES coming through with a lot of students and then looking at maybe if we're going to have a deficit that we're going to have to worry about in Arms with the amount of students coming from ACES and R C S going into Arms, if we're going to have the classroom capacity for that. Coming in a few, couple of years, so.
Yeah, the class size.
Definitely is on the wish, get on the list there.
Is there anything else, Frank? Did you have anything this evening?
I do. I do. As a matter of fact, and again, this, this, this is my opinion about something that we need to just really look at. I think the, from a school committee standpoint, it's one of our three major responsibilities is budget. We used to, I don't know when it changed, but every school committee meeting, there should be a budget update in our packet, including grants. We've had issues, not, not with this group, not with this administration, we've had problems in the past. Quite frankly, we lost grant money. We know where it went and, you know, there was legal action taken there. And, you know, just to be hearing everything about Chapter 70 and ESER and I realize it's FY '25, but this committee has the responsibility to the people that put us here to be informed. If I have somebody come to me and ask about a budget situation right now, I can't, I can't give a, an answer that would make me confident because I, I, was the first thing I looked for. Roberta can tell you that one of my main stays since I've been on this committee has been budget. And, you know, I've said it year after year after year, we need to be careful of our grant funds because we add a lot of staff and then it comes back to bite us in the rear end and the towns are not in a position right now to afford much. So just keeping us informed, you know, even if it's, I'm not looking for a full budget every single meeting, but a recap and for the current fiscal year and where, where we are with grant funds would be appreciated.
We typically have that.
I was going to say, I appreciate that. This is the first, this is the first meeting that we actually didn't have all of that information.
It didn't change from when you left, we, every month, we get the state, we get everything and it's actually grown in terms of size.
It's also difficult, we're 12 days away from a public hearing, we're supposed to vote a budget and again, it would have been nice to have a, a document prior to that so that, you know, we can reflect on it and say, and I don't, you know, again, we're usually up to versions GHIJ, but having something... The most, so to be clear though, too, the most current version of the FY '25 budget is posted on the website publicly.
Okay. I, I just feel as a committee...
No, I'm not arguing, I'm certainly not arguing with you.
No, I'm just saying, a committee member should get it sent to them, not have to go to a website and send it.
No, we did have it, we've all had it, it's just, it's just this we didn't have, it's not, and we all had it.
This was an anomaly at this meeting. I think it was because the budget subcommittee, there was the transition and the, the chair of the committee is, is no longer here and there were just some other timing factors.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, we've all already seen a whole copy of it and we all, we've already had it, it's just, it was last month. And it wasn't in this month because we were supposed to have the meeting, we weren't actually supposed to have it already, so.
Yeah, last week.
But we've always had that in our packets ever since, so you'll get it next month.
Okay.
Lee, did you have anything else?
No.
Brittany, want to come back?
Uh, yes, I just, it's my first time being here, of course, and I was looking at the agenda and I really, really appreciate how it is set up. It is really done beautifully. So it's, it's very easy to follow through and everything is nice, so I just want just to give a praise to you.
Thanks for setting it up for us, Kudos, lady.
You did a great job, Jody, excellent, it really is beautiful, nice, thank you.
Well, and Tammy deserves the credit as well for creating, for helping to create the agenda.
Yes, we, we're working as a team and this is what's all about, this is all teamwork.
Very much appreciated, Reverend.
Thank you.
Uh, that was the last for the committee member referrals and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Have a great night, everyone. See you on the 22nd.
Thank you, everyone.